All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Commissioner's Court. Let's stand and start with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come this morning together to handle county business and we pray for your guidance and direction over each of these items on the agenda. We thank you for the opportunity that you give us. We pray for this community, for our citizens, our taxpayers, our employees, our first responders, Lord. Watch over them, take care of them, our servicemen and women abroad wherever they may be. We pray for the improvement in the economy around here, that folks can get jobs and be back to work. We thank you for the blessings you poured out on us thus far. We pray for direction now and turn this over to you in Christ's name. Amen. Welcome to our second meeting of the month, 25th of March 2019. It's 9:00 AM and we'll begin with item number one. This is our opportunity for public comments, if you have any, on non-agenda items in accordance with our Open Meetings Act. Anyone that would like to address the court at this time, this is your opportunity. All right. If not, I'll move to item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our last meeting, March 11, two weeks ago.
Make a motion.
I heard Dana first. Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite and second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor of approving that set of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's none. Item number three, a report from our commissioners regarding roadwork status and what's going on within their precinct. I'll start down in numerical order with precinct one. Commissioner Riddle, anything to report?
Yes, we are still replacing culverts and rehabbing the road to get it ready for seal coat, 1435, and to change some 34 culverts in the road. And then just, of course, patching is just an ongoing battle daily.
The culvert work that's going on on 1435?
Yeah, I'm preparing it for...
Seal coat. When's the earliest we can seal coat? What, 70 degrees or something?
Something, the nights.
The nights. Anything else?
No.
Commissioner Fitch?
Well, as you can see, the way I'm dressed, I've been up since four o'clock this morning cutting trees from the storm last night. So, our guys got up and we got to the scene on 2200 this morning and it was a large tree. They're still cutting it up and hauling it off on County Road 2200. So, we also have got three big culverts that we're working on. One's on County Road 1200, one's on 1165, and one is on 1070. And we have got all the remanufactured asphalt, the wrap, from the pile on 271 North. We have all that hauled. That was the county's allotted asphalt for this year. And we replaced a few signs and have several projects soon as it dries up enough to work on them. And we got all our tractors maintenance and we have all our mowing equipment ready to go as this grass grows. Cleaned up all around the maintenance facility and got it mowed and straightened up. And we had a grade oil in the shop and we got it maintenance up to snuff, got a seal repaired on it and alternator worked on it and we're ready to go to work.
Very good. That's all I have today. Thank you. Commissioner Applewhite, precinct three?
We replaced a culvert on 3265 last week and we're ditching it with Sugar Hill and now we're hitting a tail coat with a ditching machine, cleaning ditches out. And we're trying to start patching. It was on 1915 and we're coming around, like I said, a lot of water, can't hardly patch where the water situation is right now. We're gonna start fixing the hill hole road, which is the road we live. We're gonna start tearing it up, try to patch it like a... 32... We're gonna start tearing some roads up this way, next way, try to get it patched out, get it ordered, patch it.
Okay. Commissioner four, Commissioner precinct four?
We got the large tank that we were putting in over on 4325 Friday and the guys were finishing up some dress work. Cameron finished up about lunch and then we continued doing a few things that we had to do. But he got the tank in Friday morning about, I don't know, 10:30 I guess it was, 11:00 when we finally got the tank rolled off in there. And we've got it ready to do the finishing work on it and let the landowners get their fences put back up. They were gracious enough to let us take the fences back and get in there to park our equipment and do some work in there. We also done a little work on the route of the water there to where it would get out there a little faster. We've always had problems with that road flooding. And so Dennis done a little work for me there with that. And we are about to start. That's one of the roads that is listed on our deal with the bridge out here. So we've decided to go ahead and do that road. I've got two or three, at least two other culverts to put in on that road and quite a bit of work to do on it. It's a pretty long stretch of road. It's about four miles total from start to finish, from 1,000 back around to where it ends, around there at 30... 40, 340. And we are gonna start working on it, try to get the saucepots worked out where it'll be ready to seal coat then when time comes, so.
What kind of tank were you putting in?
It was actually a railcar tank. It was a... The tank that was in there was 40... I mean, 28-foot long. It was seven foot tall. This one that we replaced it with is 10 foot one tall and 48 foot three long.
Serving as a culvert?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Serving as a culvert. They come out of Oklahoma from railroad yard up there. That's what they do is buy tanker cars and cut the ends off of them and all. So, we got it in here and Dennis got the old one out Thursday afternoon. And, yeah, Thursday afternoon. And we got this one rolled back in and then he started covering and the guys were hauling from attic precinct two. We had all that concrete and all out there that they give us when they were redoing 3417. And so we put that on the banks on each side to keep the erosion down. And it really looks good. I hadn't got the picture. I was waiting till they finish up, we finish up our dress work and all on it and then I'm gonna take some more pictures of it. It's turned out real good. I'm pleased with the way it looks.
I heard you nearly sunk in a mud hole.
Yes, sir.
Did you lose your boots?
Kind of, well, if it hadn't have been for Dennis' two guys coming over and getting the holes in the straps in my boot and pulling it out, I guess it would've still been there. But I stepped off in there and Dennis had put some trees in there to kind of walk on with a track hole. And I thought I was stepping where it was at, but undoubtedly it wasn't there, so.
So it's still wet out there, huh?
It is still extremely wet out there.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Item number four, considering possibly approve an annual maintenance contract with Newman Electronics LLC for county video surveillance system at a cost of $6,200. As you know, Mr. Newman maintains and has basically installed every bit of surveillance equipment we've got in the county. And we're in the process of wrapping up the project that will include these cameras that will watch the outside of the courthouse. That's been a fairly, a very elaborate project for Dennis and one that I'm grateful that he's figured out a way to do it. So that's, we've added some more cameras since the last time. This contract actually is effective March 1 of this year. It will expire February 28 of next year. We approve this each year. Just to run down, you know, some of these duties here for you. He examines the five DVRs that are associated, that's the digital video recorder associated with all the cameras in the courthouse, the annex, the justice center, the tax and elections office, and adult probation. He checks for correct recordings of each DVR and that the network connections are correct, ensure that each camera is operational and aimed and focused correctly, repairs any minor faults or problems found with a camera or DVR during the monthly service. In the event a severe problem is found, such as a dead camera or serious problems in the operation of the DVR, he'll report that immediately to Paul Lindsey. That's what he does on a monthly basis. This is what he does every six months. He cleans the DVR fans, vents, and filters, checks wiring connections on the cameras, cleans the lenses on each camera, inspects the camera housing for spider webs, insect nests, et cetera. Those, of course, the ones on the outside. Total cost for this contract, $6,200 per year, effective March 1. Since that is a contract, we need approval from you for that.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve this annual contract with Newman Electronics.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number five and six, we've got a couple of pieces of property that, as we do on a fairly regular basis, we consider the offers that are given. These are both pieces of property that got delinquent on taxes. Sometimes they involve different taxing entities, but we're included on both of these along with the city. The city has approved the sale of both of these. Both of these happen to be a bid from J.T. Bryson. Let me go over these one at a time. The first item, number five, is lots 1B, comma, 2, 3, and 4 of Block A in the Anderson addition. And this is a bid of $2,500. The city has accepted a bid of $2,500 and will sell the property with consent of the other entities involved. The sales price for the above lot is less than the judgment amount, which was $7,305, and the appraisal value of $39,423. So we're obviously well behind what that property was one time appraised at. There's not any structures on this like that last time where there was a house keeping that valuation high, but this is the best they have done. The city felt like it was reasonable, so they have accepted this $2,500, I guess in hopes that Mr. Bryson will improve this property and put some structures on there, homes on there, that would get appraisal value back up on those properties. This particular property is located between East 9th and East 8th in Mount Pleasant. It's a group of extremely wooded lots. Although a few of the lots have building sites on them, there's a deep drainage ditch which runs the length of the lots at the rear, which makes development and the use of the majority of these lots for housing highly impractical. There's been no interest in these lots since the city obtained them as trustee. That's the first one, so let's consider it as item number five. That was formerly in the name of Brenda Rockwell and formerly struck off of the tax roll after an auction. So will you accept $2,500 on those multiple lots?
Make a motion, we accept it.
Motion is made to approve the sale by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approving that sale, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I'll set that one aside. Tell you about item number six. This is the sale of lots 1B and 1C of Block 159, formerly in the name of Murphy Ross, previously struck off. This is a $1,500 bid from also Mr. J.T. Bryson. Sales price is for less than the judgment of $2,500 and the appraisal value of $12,000. This property is a vacant lot located on East 8th Street. That's all the details he gives me. So will you accept $1,500 for this vacant lot?
Make a motion, we accept it.
Motion is again made by Commissioner Fitch to accept this offer.
Second.
Second again by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approving this bid and sale to J.T. Bryson, $1,500, lots 1B and 1C on East 8th. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Does that just require my signature only? So those were both unanimous. All right. Item number seven, considering possibly approve a bond for juvenile board fiscal officer, Kristi Davis. Kristi is here today along with Brian. And a little bit of background here, Kristi has been serving in the... How long have you been serving now? How many years?
Twenty.
Twenty. It made sense, even though she changed counties, it made sense for her to continue to be the fiscal officer for the juvenile board. We felt no need to make a change there, so we are asking you simply to approve her bond. The juvenile board is the one that made the decision of continuing the relationship with Kristi as the fiscal officer. That's not the part in question. We're simply approving a bond as we do for other elected officials. This is a $5,000 bond that fortunately Kristi was able to qualify for. And it costs 50 bucks a year, is that right? All right. So we just simply need to approve this bond like other elected officials. This is not necessarily an elected, publicly elected position, but it was a position that was approved by the juvenile board. So if you all will approve that bond, I need a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any comments?
After John's office, we just need to get a copy of that for bottom of his files. They just want a copy for their records.
A copy of any particular page or the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay. Do you want us to just scan it to them or something like that?
Well, if you want to.
I'll run it up there to you once we've got it all executed. Okay? All right. Thank you all for coming in. All right. And that takes care of our non-typical business for the day. And that leaves us at number eight, approving oral and written reports of county officials. Carl is out today and Annette's filling in.
Paul.
No. I have a little bit more to carry on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
You know, we're trying to like say that we set the stadiums up again, saw their cold hour was at the line and some of the... Just renewed those, maybe a little better interest. We had a little bit of tech pool, but I wanted to match that right.
Really? You didn't do anything with tech pool, then?
No, we had a little of a port in there. We had a time to match it, but I matched that right, so we went ahead and checked it up. Goodbye.
Make a motion, we accept report.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to approve the oral and written reports.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number 10, do we have any... Excuse me, number nine, approve our treasurer's report. Nearly forgot you, Cheryl. Didn't mean to slight you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Second motion.
All right. Motion to approve the treasurer's report. First motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite and it's seconded by Commissioner Fitch. Any discussion or questions here? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Hand that down to you for your signatures, please. All right. Item number 10 is budget amendments, if any. We have no budget amendments, says Annette. Item number 11, signed pay orders and approved payment of the bills.
Make a motion, fair bill.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to do that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Taking a look there at item number 13, we will not be conducting a workshop with Tech Dot and DPS. I'll mention that in just a moment. Closing comments. Commissioner Fitch and I had an opportunity that we don't get very often. We were invited to come to Atlanta to the Tech Dot offices back, what was that, a couple of weeks ago? To meet one of the new commissioners, the state of Texas appointment... Actually, the governor appoints these state positions for the commissioners that preside over all things Tech Dot. These are not the day-to-day operational employees, but these are typically businessmen and women that I don't know what their relationship is with the governor or what they've done in life to prove themselves and make themselves worthy for an appointment to this very, very important body. At one time, we had Jeff Austin from Tyler, who was a banker and one of the guys that promoted and got net RMA, Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority. Jeff represented us well for several years. Jeff is no longer there. He's rolled off and a new commissioner by the name of Alvin New, just N-E-W. He is a businessman from San Angelo area and he was making rounds through several of the Tech Dot regional offices. And we were invited to come out and meet him. Or actually, I was invited. It was an invitation to local judges, but I took the opportunity to ask Commissioner Fitch if he'd like to go and I wanted to introduce him to some of the other folks at Tech Dot Atlanta. It was a golden opportunity because there weren't many people there. So we got to meet one of the new commissioners. We got to... I've met him, but Commissioner Fitch had not met Mr. Hoffman, the chief engineer with Tech Dot. So it doesn't get much higher with Tech Dot. And we had a very good informal discussion there along with about, what was there, four other judges there, I think, besides myself. And we spent about an hour and a half there just talking about projects in the area. And we got to share a couple of our thoughts and ideas and concerns. We mentioned the north end of the 271 Loop and how we would like to see that fully completed someday. And we got to talk about railroad, Northeast Texas Rural Rail District, and the importance that we felt needed to be given to that particular form of transportation, which is not getting that much attention at this time. But good to have a face-to-face. Appreciate Commissioner Fitch going along. And again, we don't get opportunities like that very often. Talking about number 13 here real briefly, as you will recall, we had a discussion about this many months ago, probably nine months ago, and Commissioner Fields was involved in that. And we were approached by DPS to see if we would be willing to participate in a joint cooperative effort with DPS, Tech Dot, the rest of us, if you're heading towards Dallas there. These would be improvements on the north side. And DPS is wanting to make that waystation a lot more functional and to staff it full time and to expand the size of that facility, add a lot of high-tech improvements there that would allow virtually every truck to pass through there. They would pass through there quickly with modern electronic equipment. They would quickly measure weight, height, width. And if they passed those preliminaries, they could pass right on through at 40 miles an hour and get right back on the interstate. For those that were randomly selected or for whatever reason were chosen for additional review, there would be a large area for them to pull into. And some of the things that DPS needs Titus County to do would be to fund the construction of more of the facility there in the form of coverage for the officers there that are taking a look at these trucks, get the trucks undercover, get pits built where they can get underneath the trucks to do inspections. What we're needing from Tech Dot is some major road renovation in there, a lot of concrete work, improvement of the ingress, egress into that property. And then what DPS would do is they would provide personnel to fund that station, full-time personnel, not just occasional handful of officers out there, but a full-time crew. This would be one of only about five waystations in the state of Texas. So I really feel like it's important that we really push for this project to occur. We need some kind of a security point for trucks coming in from the north and the east there, entering Texas. And we're fortunate to have something like that. This could be a real revenue producer for us because it would be staffed full-time. They would even anticipate somebody full-time from the JP's office would need to be out there due to the volume of citations that would probably be generated out there. That's not necessarily our prime motivation for doing it, but that is a nice benefit that comes along with that. So this is, this will be the second meeting and we have rescheduled this, trying to coordinate just the right people to be here. We're looking at April 22nd now for this workshop. And at that time, I'll have commissioners here, we'll have people from DPS, Austin, from our local Tech Dot office. And we will begin those discussions as to how much a project like this would cost, what would be the expectation of each of those parties. So this would really be something nice to have in Titus County, one of only about five of these. The others are primarily located far south of us in the Houston, San Antonio area and out west. There's nothing anywhere close to us. We need to get behind this and I'm hoping it will not be a real financial burden for Titus County because I certainly think that the revenue that would come with it would more than offset this. So that's just a taste of what's to come, but we'll readdress this in late April. Let's see, what else? I think that's all I've got. I'll start with... Oh, yes, yeah, 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 yeah. We will have... Commissioner Riddle, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Fitch?
Well, we received word from Texas Association of Counties and our risk management pool, we've won an award for Titus County for zero loss time of two thousand eighteen. And out of two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties in Texas, only a hundred-and-fifteen counties qualified for this award, and it reduced employee injuries and obtains substantial savings for our county and taxpayers by minimizing workers' compensation cost. And here's some of the awards.
Very good. And I believe you will be recognized here when you go to, we have Sheriff Ingram, Commissioner Fitch, and Nanette are all three going to attend. What is the name of that conference?
County Risk Management.
County Risk Management.
Conference in April.
And they are paying for, is it two, two folks from Titus County?
Three.
They're paying for the three.
Three of us.
They're all in the name. We can take it apart on some of the road.
Really?
Okay.
That's even better news. I didn't know about that. That's gonna be, when is that? Couple of weeks?
It's in San Marcos.
San Marcos. So risk management is important. Nanette has attended some of this before because she is the, kind of the gatekeeper with a lot of our insurance. I felt it important that she should be there. I mentioned this to the sheriff. He was very interested. And then Commissioner Fitch, I'd like to have one of you guys up on things like insurance coverage as well, so this will be a risk management, three days to two and a half days, is that right?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, so that'll be in two weeks. So we get that paid for because of our good performance. Instead of only two of them being paid for, we get three of those paid for. So very good. And you will be recognized at that, at that meeting, I understand. Very good. Anything else?
At that meeting we attended about the weigh station, what was exciting about that to me is there's only one other out of the four or five weigh stations, there's like five weigh stations in Texas, there's only one other, one of these high-tech with all this, these devices they were talking about in Saginaw, Texas.
Well, they're wrapped, I think that's the second one they're wrapped.
And they're gonna model ours off of theirs and try to improve, and all, it's pretty exciting. So we'll be the number two weigh station that has all this new technology.
You would think that weigh stations are fairly common in the state besides Texas, but there's not five.
Then that, one of those representatives from Tech Dot who deals with Greg Abbott's office and homeland security funds and such, they were really interested in helping with the funding, so that's gonna help us a lot.
That's it? That's it. Commissioner Applewhite?
No.
Commissioner Parker?
Don't think I've got anything.
All right. Very good. Okay. If there is nothing else, again, no action on item number thirteen, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Nine thirty-seven, a short one. Thank you, everyone.